Well, I'm going to call meeting of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen to order, and we'll recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May we roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Franklin?
Present.
Alderman Turner?
Present.
Alderman Milner?
Present.
Alderman Zaring?
Present.
Alderman Mills?
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Present.
Alderman Reese?
Present.
Alderman Davidson is excused. Mayor Bowman?
President, thank you. We do have a quorum, and we apologize for the difficulties with the Zoom this evening. They were on hand. So I want to welcome you all by Alex Felsing, our city attorney, several staff members, and some individuals to address the board this evening. So going to start by telling you that we're moving the question for the FFA who next meeting February 22nd. So that will come off of the agenda for tonight. You'll also see that we've moved arrangement of the public participation down to under after the approval of minutes for Mr. Menching to be able to address the board. So we'll move on with the approval of the Board of Aldermen meeting of January 18th. They were in your packet, so I hope you had the opportunity to read them. If so, I entertain a motion unless there are corrections.
Make a motion to approve?
I second.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Franklin. A waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand up. The minutes of the work session of the Board of Aldermen, January 18th, they were also available to you in your packet, and unless there are corrections, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion for Alderman Zaring, a second from Alderman Milner. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes also stand approved as read. And because we are on Zoom tonight, if you want to speak, if you would please put your hand in front of your camera so I can recognize you, and that way we won't be stepping on each other. All right, we'll move on then. Participation. We have a request from Mr. Menching. Mr. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the Board of Aldermen for allowing me to speak this evening. I'll be short and sweet. I just come before the board this evening to request a waiver for the permit review fees for Phase Two of the school's bond projects. In essence, I'm advocating for what Mr. Arthur placed in your packet for the third approach in that mechanical electrical plumbing will be pulled by the contractors. The permits will be pulled by the contractors themselves. The school will still be contracting for special inspections for structural. And so that is my request this evening, and just to offer some rationale behind that. You know, we're cutting every penny that we can, as close as we can, to try and get these projects accomplished, including we've pursued additional grant funding. Part of the ESER III money that we received from the federal government or are supposed to receive from the federal government has not been appropriated by the state legislature yet. We're the only state in the United States that has not appropriated those funds yet for our school district. That's $2.2 million, a million of which is included for additional work incorporating bond work. So that would be HVAC renovation work. So we're cutting it right to the penny to get these projects done. And any help that we can receive, we greatly appreciate, and we greatly appreciate the city's help with the first phase, and this is the second and final phase of our project. So that is all. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Menching. So for Menching's comments, we will move on then to the agenda items with Council Bill 05. Mr. Felsing?
Council Bill 05, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville authorizing the city administrator to waive inspection and permitting fees related to projects to be completed within the Harrisonville School District in the year 2022.
Mr. Arthur?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can hear you on your computer, Chris.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. For my staff report right up, there's a few ways you could look at this. I'd be fine with any of them. The only thing I'd add is in addition to the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits, we usually permit commercial roofing. And a large part of the projects are re-roofing the two schools. I was talking with the architect today, and she has kind of filled me in on a little more detailed scope of work. So I would like to recommend if we're gonna issue permits to the subs, that we include the commercial roofer and have him get a commercial permit for that work. And then the structural work, there's a new canopy going in, and a lot of that stuff will be picked up under special inspections by the construction manager anyway. So the only different thing I would add to what the superintendent had to say was that we think about permitting the commercial roof part of it too. That's all I have.
Mr. Menching or Mr. Arthur? Alderman Mills?
So, Chris, you're saying we would charge the subcontractors a fee or not charge the subcontractors a fee?
I'm saying we would charge them a fee. I believe the superintendent sent agreement that we can permit the MEPs mechanical electrical plumbing and charge them permit fees. What we'd basically be doing is I'd recommend we end up issuing four separate permits, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and commercial roofing. And then waive the general construction work fees, including all the plan review fees. And I don't have a breakdown yet from Brandon Stanley, the construction manager, head guy. All I've gotten basically is the total value of the work. And what's in my staff report is just general fees if we were permitting the whole job like we usually would. And then there's also a breakdown available as to what the first phase projects cost us. Anybody wanting to chat about that at all? That would be fine.
And the special inspections, that's outside of our realm, and the school pays directly for those structural inspections or those inspectors that come on site that are not part of the city.
That's correct, Bill. The only thing I do is I review all special inspections. So they usually it's a website link. And I get the reports as they're done, make sure everything looks good, and then if not, I consult with the engineer record. And between the two of us, we figure out what needs to happen to where at the end of the project, then he'll sign off on all specials.
So the fee waiving is only going to be what is done in-house by the city?
Yeah, that's correct. The fee waiving would, number one, be the plan review. So that amount we'd be waiving based on the full amount, the 8.2 million, we'd immediately be waiving $16,416. And then depending on how the work valuations break out, we'd be waiving a pretty substantial portion probably of the 32,832.
So it appears that we'd be substantially less than Phase One that we did last year on what we're waiving, and possibly less than 50% using the approach three.
Yes, sir. I would agree that that is accurate.
I think that's my questions, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Alderman?
I just, I'm curious. I want to make sure that our resolution is correct because I see 2022 dates, and I see also a 2021 date in there. Is that correct? Because that, it's also talking about the January 19th of 2021 in that resolution. Am I correct?
Alex, you want to jump in and answer all your question?
Yeah, sure thing. I'm trying to pull it up right now. Sorry, my internet's a little slow as well.
It's about the third paragraph down.
Thank you.
And I think it's talking about we did in the past on January 19th of 2021. I just want to make sure that is correct.
I am pulling it up now. Pardon me.
Just your year of 2022. I do think it's correct, Alex, but I just wanted you to double check.
Sure. I do recall this discussion occurring last year as well. I believe it is correct. I can confirm tomorrow in a follow-up email. I'll put this on my notes.
Thank you, Alex. Any other questions from the board? There are no further questions. I would entertain a motion.
Oh, Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we move forward with approach number three.
I would second.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Milner and from Alderman Milner. May I have a roll call?
Yes. Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you. Council Bill 05 becomes Resolution R 2022-04. Council Bill Six.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure my understanding was that would include Chris's recommendation that we add the roofing as a separate permit, a fourth permit. That's the way I understood the presentation by Chris for three.
Right, that's the way we staff took it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the clear. Moving on then to Council.
Council Bill Six, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri authorizing the mayor to participate as a member of the Cass County Crime Coalition.
Thank you. Mr. Ratliff?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Alderman, we gave you a little briefs in office at our last meeting about this would probably be coming up. I probably gave you way more detail than you wanted to in the staff report, but wanted you all to know how this started out. And initially, this is just the first phase of a three-phased approach that the sheriff is attempting to get together to deal with a crime within the county. We've had quite a few meetings, and the next meeting will be coming up, I believe later this month. And the whole point of this, that the mayor be on it, is they want the mayor to be on this first phase to be a part of the discussions to deal with any legislation that's going on in Jeff City. I know one of the big things that the sheriff would like to see is legislation passed that if you take off and run from an officer, that it be a felony and not a misdemeanor. They got it all the way to the Senate last year, and you all recall the Senate decided to go home early and didn't take up any of the remaining bills. They also want the mayor to be a part of that political will to continue to meet the ventures of crime that's going on within the county or the community. That second phase, which in so many respects, the chief can validate, they already kind of do that now. It'd probably be more formal in an agreement that they share data and share information. And then that third phase would be the task force, which is really way down the road in trying to figure out how that would be completed. So all this resolution does for you all tonight is say that we are going to be a part of the Cass County Crime Coalition, and that the mayor would participate on that board. And if you have any questions, I said I tried to give a lot of detail, how many meetings and how it got to this point. The sheriff has said that it's been a learning experience for him in dealing with cities and what they can and can't do. And we are appreciative that the Cass County Commission thus far seems to be willing to fund a lot of this initiative that the sheriff is wanting to do. And so right now, with this resolution, if you pass it tonight, there's really not any dollars that have been associated for any of the cities to to appropriate toward this venture. It's all being paid for right now by the sheriff. Madam Mayor, if there's any questions, I'd be more happy to answer any that any may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. And before we move forward, I'm just going to ask Chief Hofer if he has any comments that he'd like to add about the coalition.
I do not, Mayor. I believe it's a wonderful opportunity for Cass County. We're always better working together, and this kind of formalizes us putting it together and having the governmental bodies back it as well. And I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for all of us, including the city here as well.
Thank you, Chief. So as you heard Mr. Ratliff explain, this is, there's no expenditure of money at this point upon the city. This is just an agreement that you're allowing me to be a participant in the coalition. So any questions from any of you, for Mr. Ratliff, for Chief Hofer, or myself? Well, seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
I have a motion from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Franklin. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you. Council Bill Six is approved and becomes Resolution 2022-05. The public hearing for the RV park. Mr. Clark?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Before you, we have an application from Mr. and Mrs. Winter to request the extension of the maximum day stay at their RV park from 30 days with the current special use permit to 180-day maximum day stay. And I think I have all the information in the staff report. At the last minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, in which the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 20th did recommend to approve the request for the extended stay to 180 days. And I will address any questions you may have for this time. And the Winters are joining us this evening, so if you have questions of the Winters, you can pose those to them.
We'll just go ahead and open the public hearing then, and Jason, if you or Jennifer have comments you want to make, this is an opportunity for you to do so.
Thank you, Mayor Bowman and Alderman, for being a part of this. I'd probably just rather start off, if it's okay, if with any questions you might have for us. We've been in business here at the RV park for a little over five years, and so if there's, what questions, what you have?
Members of the board have questions for the Winters?
I guess I do.
Alderman Reese?
Yeah. I probably haven't done my homework on this, Miss Winter, so just assume that I'm looking for further information. It's my understanding that before that you did a 30-day permit for your folks that came in. Is that right?
Yes, when we started the RV park back in 17, when we came before the planning and zoning and the Board of Aldermen at that time, we'd never run an RV park or anything like that, and it felt like a 30-day stay was plenty for residents that wanted to come into Harrisonville. Since then, we've had multiple corporations call us wanting to send in their working staff for a period of time for a job, and the job's longer than 30 days. We've had local residents that have sold their home and are building a new home, and their home sold so fast in this market, they needed a place to stay, you know, find a place to stay until their home was finished. And so we've had people that stayed like that that time. And then we've also had families in Harrisonville that's got relatives or whatever that just strictly RV for a living. They might spend the winter in Florida, and then they want to come up here and spend the summers with the the family and the grandkids and that and want to stay, and they, you know, they all want to stay over the 30 days. Many of them want to stay over the 30-day period on that. So that's what we have found over the years of being open, is that the demand for the over 30 days and, you know, up to six months at least to, they want to stay.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I think that my original, when y'all first came in, it was my understanding, just I really believed that it was just for people that were traveling across country, and they were going to stay two or three nights perhaps. And so I didn't realize that it's more of a rental property kind of a thing. So not rental property, but that they intended to stay for such a long period of time. Thank you. I appreciate your explanation.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Reese. Alderman Milner?
I just had a couple of questions. And this may be something we need that we are going to discuss later, but just out of curiosity. So when this came back up, was there ever discussion about, I guess I'm confused as to why we're leaving it as a special use permit, which, when in all honesty, it's become a very successful business. And I like that, you know, anytime you drive by there, it's always clean. It's always, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing laying around and stuff like that. I didn't know if maybe in our work session, that's what we're going to be discussing. But if not, if staff could clarify that just a little bit.
Certainly.
The Winters wanted it differently. Was that ever brought up?
I know they were issued a special use permit back in 2016, and I'll let Mr. Arthur address why they had a special use permit.
Well, and not so much as why to begin with, because I kind of understand that part, but since we're bringing this back up to change it, I guess my question was, was there any discussion as to why we're leaving it a special use permit instead of a business permit?
Okay. Mr. Arthur?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, our zoning code requires special use permit for this type of use, actually in any zoning district. So this is a C2 zoning district, and so it was required to get a special use permit, not based on the district, but based on the use itself.
Thank you. Does that provide clarification, Alderman Milner?
Um, yes.
Okay. Other questions from members of the board? Seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion, and I would point out that this is an ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to pass this.
I'm sorry, Alderman Milner. State your motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we move to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to suspend the rule on Council Bill Seven and advance it to a second reading. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you. Second reading.
An ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, admitting a special use permit for the recreational vehicle park at 700 Plaza Drive.
And a roll call?
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Mills?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Franklin?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
Thank you. Council Bill Seven is approved and becomes ordinance 3575. Congratulations to the Winters. Your special use permit extension has been approved.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you all. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, that completes our agenda items. We'll move on to Alderman and committee reports. Alderman Franklin?
One thing I wanted to say is I wanted to commend Bill Mills for the donation he made for the Mills Cancer and Rheumatology Center out on, for Cass Regional Medical Center. I think that's a wonderful gift, and we certainly, the residents of Harrisonville will certainly benefit that for years to come. And I thought it was just an extraordinary gift on your part, so thank you for that. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Milner?
I just think we probably all want to thank our street department and our city crews that worked during our snowmageddon that really didn't happen, but kind of happened. And they did an amazing job as always. So kudos to them.
Thank you. Alderman Reese? Thank you. Alderman Reese. You're muted.
I should have been in front of Alderman Re- or Milner because I wanted to thank the street department too, and she beat me to it. So they have done an incredible job. I watched them go up and down East Pearl Street with cars parked and they're trying to get around them and through them. And and I I think if I was on that big truck, I'd be throwing rotten tomatoes at the houses or something because they they're wonderful. They really are. And and we're so fortunate to have them. Um I know that there's other other folks during this period of time that are working very hard too. I think the electrical department has had quite a couple of weeks. We do appreciate their hard work. Everybody has just done such a marvelous job. And just thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Mills?
Uh relating to sand, it's difficult to figure out how to uh help the community. And I was thrilled when the hospital approached me and able able to do that. It's uh sometimes difficult to uh figure out or to direct uh direct things. Um, I uh, yeah, the the crews did good. Um, and and I know this afternoon, unfortunately, um I I saw our EMS and and patrolman had a fatality on I forty nine here. Um, and so I know they did a great job out there on that also today. Um, Sunday morning, I took an opportunity for a little walk in the city park and walked across the new dam. Uh, that project sure is coming along great. Uh, uh, looks looks really, really good. We're gonna have a fantastic uh facility out there a year from grasses growing. It all is wonderful again. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Dorhoff.
I can't add anything more than what's already been said, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Turner?
Nothing more.
Nothing more for you. Okay. Alderman Zaring?
Yeah, I think uh they stole all the thunder. I will add, I, you know, I was gonna send an email, but uh you know, attended the employee dinner, the annual employee dinner there uh what, a week ago or so. And, you know, a great event, had a lot of people show up out there. And uh, and I think everybody had fun. The food was good. A lot of gifts. I think, you know, uh tho- sometimes those types of events can be maybe boring and people don't like to go to them. But uh I think the city, everybody involved with that. I mean, to make that happen, did a great job to to create a good event there. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Alderman. And I see that Teresa West is actually on this Zoom call. Uh, she doesn't have her camera on, so you can't see her. But Daniel is also on this call and and I just want you all to remember that it was Teresa and Daniel who really put that event together. And so I think it's good to be able to have the opportunity for them to hear from the board on what a successful event it was. So we're grateful to our staff and we're grateful to those vendors who did provide those prizes for our staff. That was something that we haven't been able to do for the last couple of years. And we're very pleased to be able to do it for our staff this year. So Alderman Zaring, thank you for being there and others who was there. And thank you for your kind words. All right, well, certainly. Go ahead, Alderwoman.
I I was going to be sure and shout out kudos to Grant. Um, and I'm, I don't know if everybody knows this, but at the school district, not last week before snowmageddon, but the previous week, we had to shut school down because we had some furnaces that decided that they were done and they were gonna blow. And Grant did a great job. We, I was able to notify him and let him know that kiddos were gonna be coming out earlier. And from what I understand, they had staff ready. And when all the kiddos got there earlier than expected, um, everything was in place and in order, and they just went on about their day. So Grant, good job.
So Grant, we're gonna get you a Superman cape. How about that?
Well, maybe I already have one.
I'm joking.
I just so appreciate our staff. You guys, you guys and girls are just awesome. We just really do appreciate you. All right, moving on then to uh the city administrators' report.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, just want to remind everybody, the March second uh open house for the comprehensive plan. And that'll be at the um test or the Chamber of Commerce office. Uh, we're looking at probably the second meeting in March that the consultants will probably be before uh the Alderman and the mayor to kind of go over some of the final draft uh of some of the uh comprehensive plan and the input uh from the various different groups and the plethora of meetings that we've attended, uh getting that input as well as uh online input that's come in on that as well. Uh, the last winter storm uh cost us about eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. Carl made sure to keep the ninety-three cents in there. And uh, so far this year, you know, the winter storms, uh, we have about forty-nine thousand seventy-two dollars and sixty-four cents that has been spent toward um snow removal. And uh I'm very happy we didn't get as much snow as they said they were. I was praying a lot and thanked the Lord. He answered my prayer. Uh, the muddy uh muddy creek regional dry retention, uh, we're looking at advertisements on to be sent out on February the tenth, and that the bid would uh be ready for uh March the third. And so we're continuing to move uh as quickly as possible on that project. Um, uh Alderman Mills discussed about City Lake and Lake Luna. There's a lot of of really good things that are going on, as well as the contractors are doing that. Uh, Grant has his employees out there removing a lot of the brush and trees that have been around uh the lakes and stuff. And it looks just tremendous. Uh, a lot of that clearing that they have done out through those areas. Um, along with that, with the trees, uh, Grant's working with a the conservation group and uh looking at from Lord's Park and other uh places that we have trees, uh where we can have them logged out and uh to clear pathways and spaces. Um, and then be paid for the removal of those trees. And right now, some of the preliminary that's been coming back on what we would get, Grant would be able to uh possibly do some really nice improvements at Lord's Park uh with those funds that come in uh for those tree removals. And in conjunction with that, um, the airport, as you all know, we told you at the last meeting, that now the uh, the quick decisions that you all made to move forward with the engineering on the airport with the hopes that we could get additional funds with that is now that it looks like the matching fund, the five percent, we're not going to have to come up uh with those funds that the feds are gonna give us those additional dollars. With that, they also looked at additional things, and they want on the north side a hundred and thirty trees removed um for the the landing and takeoff uh of that area. So we're also gonna be talking with the same uh person about instead of us having to go in there and move them ourselves, maybe we could be able to have the same logging group be able to remove some of those that would be worthwhile. And then the rest of them uh that aren't, th- then we can focus in on those, on those removals. And so uh we're still on track uh for the airport. Uh, but of course, because of the trees and what environmental, you know, there's more stuff we gotta do uh that's involved with that. Uh, the wastewater treatment facility is about seventy-eight uh percent complete. On that project, uh, they're looking for the first week of March uh to start up some of that additional UV and train staff uh that's down at the sewer plant. Outdoor pool is still on schedule, about sixty-six percent complete. Uh, MoDOT completed a in-house study of mechanic street between I forty-nine and the uh rail crossing. And you, as you all know, that it's a it's a traffic problem uh along there, especially early in the morning and after work hours. Uh, in their cursory review, they did identify that there is need for a traffic signal at both of the locations of the on and off ramps. And they also identified the need for turn lane. Uh, they had not addressed the other outer road uh concept of where uh the old vet clinic and uh Mr. Park's car practice and all of that was there. And we had a discussion with them about that, about relocating uh kind of a entrance there where the Pizza Hut would be, which they were okay with, but they hadn't really studied that portion of it out. But just with the two traffic signals and the widening of uh a turn lane from I forty-nine uh to the rail, um, they have not decided about any lights there at uh West Chester because they are still doing traffic counts. And they think that by April uh to May, they will be done with those traffic counts. And um, but just that first initial phase of the two signals and the widening is one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of course, they said it's not on their their stip. Uh, right now, it would be on uh the earliest they could get it on their stip would be uh next year's. Uh, but if the city wanted to, they had to get done uh quicker, of course, if we wanted to do a uh fifty fifty with them uh to get that accomplished, they were more than willing to get us on their step and and to be able to get that done in a quicker amount of time. I told them I was more interested in eighty, twenty, or ninety, ten, and uh they didn't seem as excited about that. But uh, we'll, we'll keep uh uh our discussions open with them, and hopefully by April uh or May, we'll get additional information on the additional uh eh, the additional entrance as well as the turn signals. Um, police department had good news last week. Um, uh Corporal Tim Mickelson is is back uh in the police department uh after his hiatus to Minnesota. I'm sorry, Alderman Mills, he didn't find as exciting up in Minnesota as as you have found it to be at times. And um, so we're glad to have him back. And then uh Starbucks, as you seen, is moving along. And then the Cass County Detention is doing a sizable uh addition remodel uh to their facility that Coach Department is doing uh their component as well uh in those reviews. And lastly, uh, through a lot of the different things we were doing staffing wise, and as you all know, um, uh Rogers departure, uh, my my two um current employees with uh Jim Clark and Chris Arthur were not interested in being department heads. And uh so as a result of that, we went out for a community development director. And with that community development director, we uh have hired Christina Stanton, who is uh coming to us from Colorado. She was uh there thirteen years with Lee Summit. And the past four years, uh been out to Colorado, and she's coming back uh to this area and will be uh working for us. And Chris and Jim are very excited and waiting and wanting her to hurry up and get here. And you see them both smiling really big, uh because they've been sharing the duties. They have a lot of that on the zoning side. And for some reason, they neither one want to do that part. So uh they are, uh, we're excited to see Christina coming. She's got a seller home there, and uh we're hoping the uh first day of April, uh she'll be with us. With that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
That's exciting news. Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. You know, it's always quite a compliment to the city when you have employees who return. I know we were excited when John Morris returned to work with Chris Arthur, and now Tim Michelson has returned to work with Chief Hofer. So what a compliment it is to us when our employees leave, but then come back. So um, you have the municipal court report in your packet. And I know Mr. Minnick is on the call, so I would ask if there are any questions from the media?
I don't believe so. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Well, the only comment that I would have, uh, one is a calendar change for you. You know, we have a holiday coming up. Uh, President's Day will interfere with our meeting. So we're going to move our meeting to Tuesday, the twenty-second of February. So if you make that adjustment to your calendar, if you show up on that Monday night, there won't be anybody around. Um, I also want to acknowledge um Alderman Mills, former mayor, Bill Mills, for his generosity in making that donation to the cancer unit at um Cass Regional. That's gonna be a huge addition to the community, and I want to thank you, Bill, um, for your generosity there. Also, um, you, several of you made comments and kudos to the staff for their work on the street department. I want you to know that Mr. Brooks made arrangements for other staff in Public Works to also help the street department um with their road maintenance during that snowstorm. So thank you, uh Carl, for the leadership that you bring to the Public Works team. I know um, Mr. Alderman Mills mentioned about the crash that occurred out in forty-nine today. We don't know any of the details at this point, but I think on behalf of the city and the Board of Alderman, we'd like to extend our our condolences and offer our thoughts and prayers for any of those folks who were involved in that accident. What a horrific thing. Well, that's all I have, Board. Um, thank you for this evening. I apologize for the snafu on my internet connection earlier. And uh let's uh entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
The Alderman is, the uh motion is from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Will adjourn, and we'll come back in just a couple of minutes for our work session.